Yes. Dr. Walkley, will you review the fire exits?
The fire exits are directly behind the audience in front of us.
And would you like to introduce our workshop tonight?
I would. First up this evening is Dr. Sebberding, who has a wonderful announcement to make, so I'll crawl in.
Thank you very much. I mean, a night like tonight are those evenings that I think we're all looking forward to. And before I introduce the two young women who have been designated as the valedictorian and salutatorian, some of us had the pleasure to go down to the lower council of superintendents in Tarrytown at the Doubletree Hotel, where the top students from all of the Westchester, Putnam County Dutchess are honored for their academic and their achievements during this school year. And, you know, just to spend some time with these two young ladies is really uplifting. Some of the board members were there, Dr. Walkley was there, and certainly will attest to what I just said. So let me do this, please. I will announce, we have, and I'll ask them to come here, and I'll say a little bit about them, but then, you know, I'm going to give it to the two young ladies and tell you, and talk a little bit about their plans. So Peshia Numalo, who's our valedictorian, and Melody Fan, who is our salutatorian. So if you would just come and step next to me, please. And also, both her parents are in the audience as well, so again, welcome. It's really uncanny when you look at what they've accomplished over the last four years here at Beacon High School. And what I did is I simply took criteria, and I went to Peshia, and then I went to Melody, and check, 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 check. There's so much similarity, but there's also a lot of difference between the two. Peshia and both Melody, obviously, top-notch students here at Beacon High School, both followed a rigorous college prep program. Both of them were on the principal's honor roll for every single quarter at Beacon High School. They are both receiving an Advanced Regents Diploma with honors and distinction in math and science. And then there's a little bit of a twist of things they did differently, although, but there's still a lot of commonality there. Peshia was in the STEP program, which is Science, Technology, and Engineering Program. At New Pulse, every Saturday, they went there. The IBM Project Lead, both of them with National Youth Leadership. Melody went to Dutch at the DCC Leadership Program. Peshia was a student in our Students Against Destructive Decisions Program on the mock trial. Both of them are members of the National Honor Society, obviously, and Peshia was the president of the National Honor Society. Peshia worked for the campaign to reelect Senator Terry Gibson. And I think Melody went to some other congressional person, right? Who was that? The one that you worked for, the legislator, if you remember that? Oh, you did too, both of you. They supported the same candidate, so it's a lot to go there. Peshia worked for Project Hope. And also, Melody was the president of an organization called H2O, which doesn't stand for water, but it's the H, and it's helping to overcome, you know, diverse, I mean, like financial issues. And what they did, they designed a product, they advertised it, they sold stocks, they sold everything. The stockholders got back 50 percent. And the other 50 percent went back to the veterans to, for the projects that our students have been supporting. So I'm going to shift all my money to Melody, going to take care of my stocks, right? And then we have also her work with Habitat for Humanity. She worked with the Bridges to Community Service. She was in Dominican Republic, helping people there in with the Habitat for Humanity. So, as you can understand, an outstanding resume and the accomplishments that they have garnered. So I'm going to stop, and you want to go first?
Okay.
Okay, you go first. Okay, Peshia and Numalo are valedictorian.
Thank you, being named Dr. Walkley and the Board of Education. I'm very honored to be standing before you, and I just would like to give you a little bit about what I plan to do when I graduate. My plan is to attend Brown University in Providence, Rhode Island, to major in international relations. My hope from there on is to eventually become like an international lawyer of sorts, and at that point, continue to work. I just want to say thank you very much to Dr. Sebberding and the assistant principals and all my teachers for helping me to achieve this goal, and of course, my parents who've been there respectfully. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Walkley. My name is Melody Fan, and I'm very honored to be the salutatorian. I plan to attend Resonator Polytechnic Institute in the fall, and I'm majoring in physics. I have very early interest in particle physics. I hope to study it further, and ideally, I would like to get a job at a National Research Laboratory. Thank you, everyone, for your support. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next part of the workshop is a presentation from me. It's going up there. This evening, I wanted to talk just a little bit about the new enacted educational policy, and it's called the Educational Transformation Act of 2015. And as I said in a letter, if you've been around educators recently, you probably have heard a little bits and pieces about this new law. Of course, right now, there's a lot of discussion around the law, and some, a lot of advocacy to change some of the pieces of the law, but I want to focus to just one little piece. But to do that, what I'm going to do is just give a little bit of history, a brief look back and where this law came from. I'm going to talk about the timeline of the implementation of the law, and then just one little piece of the law. I'll talk about, I'll just name the other pieces, but I'll talk a little bit about this new piece that they've added into the Annual Professional Performance Review, and some of the unintended consequences of student New York State test refusals, and how it relates to this new law. And then I'll close up. So let's take a look back. The APPR, or Annual Professional Performance Review, requirements from the state began in 2011 and '12. And along with that legislation at that time, came a lot of changes in education. Districts were asked to negotiate a plan, and there were many negotiable items that districts sat down and worked with the unions, both the Administrators' Union and the Teachers' Union, to come up with a plan that met all of the requirements. That was also the year that they did a major change in student assessments. And so any district like this district that aligned their targets to the New York State Later, the commissioner talked about how the assessments were designed to be particularly hard that year, and to change the level of rigor that was being assessed. So across the state, we saw this major dip in student performance in the scores from From that experience, if they hadn't done before, many districts looked at their plans in the next year and took a look at how they could vary scores with conversion charts. Because what we have is a system that assesses teachers based on student performance. And some other evening, I could talk about that and the validity that we may or may not see with that. And the purpose of putting in those conversion charts was really to level the playing ground for teachers. The other thing that we see across the state, first, one good thing that came out of the APPR is the level of conversation that we have with teachers and administrators about student performance. That's one of the most positive outcomes that we've seen from the APPR. We don't want to lose that. An additional outcome that is not maybe where the state really wants us to be, nor where we want to be, is that we focus a lot to scores. And we focus to scores for students, and we focus to scores for teachers. And we hear time and time again, and administrators as well, time and time again, we hear, "I want to be a four." The level four is, in the scoring devices that we use, are based on values designed by the state. And I'm not sure that as we chose our evaluation instruments, that we took a look at the values that were embedded in those instruments. They're very challenging and rigorous, and takes an awful lot to be a four. And so sometimes we hear now administrators across the state, I hear them say, "Well, we don't live in the four land, we only visit there once a while." Because everybody wants to be a four, everybody wants to be a four. I would want to be a four. And so this APPR is a system that has started, but it's not really producing what it is that we wanted. The conversation, where the conversation is going, is really to, "How do I get points? What do I have to do to get points?", instead of those good conversations that we're having about teaching and learning. So we have a system that's been put up by the state, and we're not totally satisfied with that system. Now, from the state's point of view, I'm not sure they're satisfied with the system either, but they're not satisfied from a different point of view. And so this past year, the governor, and you may remember back when we were waiting for the governor to give us our state aid so that we could put our budget together, and the governor said he was going to withhold information about the state aid from districts until the legislatures agreed to a new plan that he put forward and that is related to the APPR. And I want to talk a little bit about the timeline. Back in 11-12, there was a very short timeline, and districts were under pressure to make a plan, meet all of the requirements. And one of the things that I would like to say that we as educators could learn is that we don't want to repeat history. So this plan has multiple deadlines. The Board of Regents are meeting on June 15th and 16th. And they are going to place forward by the plan, planning guidelines to the district by June 30th. The plans, from the state's point of view, need to be submitted on or around September 1st, so that gives them time to review the plans and improve them by November 15th, and implement them. Then the district would begin to implement those plans mid-year. So as we can see, once again, the state has placed forward a very quick deadline for a very complex process. And I think that the state forgot that teachers don't work over the summer. And so, and so we have to negotiate a plan over the summer, and whether teachers are willing or not willing, certainly, I can tell you from the higher levels within the union, that they are really questioning the validity of this guideline, and whether they want teachers to be working over the summer. So what components are affected by this law? Well, obviously, the whole evaluation system, that's where I started. And again, I'm not going to go into great detail, but to just to give you a big overview, the score received by the teachers and the principals will look different going forward. The observation process of teachers and principals is changing, and how observation and student performance is gathered, who gathers it, and how the data or information is used is changing. How the observations and student performance are weighted, how they're calculated through a matrix that the state has put together, how they're reported and how they're sanctioned is all changing. And we even have to question the use of the existing rubrics and the type of evidence that can be gathered, because the state has said, "Well, some of the types of evidence that you have gathered, you're not going to be able to use next year." Another thing that is changing is who is tied to the state tests. Also, laws around tenure is changing, and fairly dramatically. Laws around due process, the 30-20A process, is changing in two areas, both in teacher and, I should say, teacher and administrator performance or competence, and also in misconduct. The rules are changing. How teachers need to re-register for certification is changing. So as you can see, this is a major change in education once again, in just three years from where we started. The place I want to land this evening and talk a little bit about is this idea of receivership, or what happens with failing schools. And some of you may know that it's been a little bit in the news that Poughkeepsie is looking at receivership for next year, so it's real, it's here. And I don't know how much of this law may be modified going forward, but let's find out a little bit about what this is. Failing schools or persistently failing schools can be placed into a receivership that would be done by the state. A failing school is generally defined as in the lowest 5 percent, lowest achieving levels of 5 percent of the schools across the state. And for at least three consecutive years are identified as a priority school. However, we're going to see that it's not just priority schools that can be set into a receivership. The commissioner can place a school into receivership, where a receiver, and I'll define that a little bit, these are all new words to all of us, all new vocabulary, a receiver is a person or a group of people, will manage and operate the school, subject to annual review by the commissioner until such time as the school has improved sufficiently from the state's point of view. Currently, there are 27 priority schools that have been struggling for more than 10 years in the state. They will have only one year to dramatically turn around or become a receivership school. They have one year, starting this, actually, starting July 1st. Other priority schools will have two years to turn around until an outside receiver is appointed to control the school. New priority schools in the year 2016-17 are automatically eligible for the receivership. So if a newly identified, just newly identified priority school can be put into a receivership What data points is the state using? Well, this hasn't changed. This is the old-school accountability measures that we've always been looking at. We've always been looking at student performance and student participation in state assessments. So just today, the state is releasing our school's and district's status, just today. It's been embargoed, but today is the day, so I can share this information with you about Beacon. To determine the status of a school district or the schools within the district, the state looks at student performance and participation for a two-year period, and we're always a year behind. So there's two questions they ask. Is the school or district making enough progress and/or making the targets from previous years? And are they meeting the participation rate of testing 95 percent of our students or more from the previous measured years? And, again, you know, also, are we making enough progress? Same thing for the current year, but the current year is always the previous year, which is so state-like to be confusing that way. So here's our challenge. Last year, in the year 2013-14, in this district and across the state, students, a movement was started where it was called the Opting Out, where students were refusing to take state tests. Last year, in the year 2013-14, we did not test 95 percent of our students. So, from the information, looking at the district, looking at the district from the information from the state that's being released today for the Beacon City School District, we're looking at two different years, 2012-13 and 2013-14. So in the year 2012-13, did the Beacon School District overall make enough progress or meet enough targets? The answer is yes. Did we meet our minimum performance requirements? The answer is yes. And did we meet our participation rate with the 2013-14 assessments? The answer is yes. We tested 95 percent. Last year, last year, did we make progress? The answer is yes. And did we meet minimum performance requirements? The answer is yes. Did we meet the participation rate with the 12, I'm sorry, with the 13-14 assessments? The answer is no. And therefore, for the year 2015-16, we will stay a focused district. We also already know that as much as we intend, we collectively intend to improve in the year 2015-16, we already know we did not meet 95 percent. So we will remain a focused district. And we will continue to remain a focused district until we can have two consecutive years of making progress, meeting targets, and testing 95 percent of our students. So here's the balancing act that's going on, it's very political, as you all know. And I applaud people for becoming involved in advocacy, and they certainly have a right to do that. As a community, I want us to think about what it is that we want for our school district. And we need to think about this idea of being a focused school, and this cloud, I'm going to tell you a little bit more about the receivership, this cloud that's kind of hanging over us right now, for our inability to stop being a focused district. So that's something that I think that during the school year, we need to talk about, and we need to have some forums and discussions around that, about how we advocate to the district, or I'm sorry, to the state, and we move forward in getting off the focused school list. So who or what is a receiver? Well, as you can see, they're wild people, and they're very much like a boss manager, because when they come into a district, it could be a nonprofit organization, it could be another school district, it could be an individual. They will have the power to supersede any decision policy or regulation of the district that conflicts with a school intervention plan that they are going to write. They will have the authority to review proposed school district budgets and modify them to conform to the schooling intervention plan. They will contract with the commissioner and be paid by SED, with the exception that if there is an open administrative staffing line in the district budget, then the district will need to pay for the receiver. And the receiver will be a member, although not a voting member, of the Board of Education. The role of the receiver is to create a district-wide plan for improvement, and there are two tools that they can use. Consultation, where the receiver will create a school intervention plan in consultation with local stakeholders. So the community will be invited in to influence the thinking of the receiver, although the receiver can accept or reject information or ideas that are given to them. The other tool that they will use is considerations. The receiver will consider the recommendations of the community engagement team, and address academics, attendance, school, social and emotional health needs, all of the things that we've begun to address in this district. What does the plan include? I'm going to post this PowerPoint for you to take a look at, because there's a lot of information here. But I want to just point out once again, if, when you look at this information, what you're going to see is student attendance, that we've already started addressing, and discipline, both in short and long term. Student safety, tonight, I'm giving an update on our district safety plan, so we'll be talking about that. Student promotion, and there it is, graduation and dropout rates. So as you begin to look at this list, you can see why we're doing the things that we're doing, because that's what the state first wants us to do, and because we need to improve in those areas. And in particular, I also will point out family and parent engagement as well. Again, I'm not going to go through all of this, but some of the measures that they will be held accountable to are measures that address gaps for our students with disabilities and English language learners. That's why this year, and our plan going into the future, we have consultants who actually are quote-unquote free from our liaisons through the BOCs, come into our schools and work with our teachers on strategies and information, gathering information around English language learners and students with disabilities, and also the economically disadvantaged, which by the way, is one of the biggest challenges that we have in this district. Again, a lot of information. The receiver shall, shall convert the school to a community school to provide expanded health, mental health, and other services to the students. In addition, the receiver may expand, alter, or replace the curriculum and program offerings, including any advanced courses. including any advanced courses, any literacy courses, any of the courses of study or curriculum that we have. Ultimately, the receiver also has the power to recommend that the school become a charter Well, what else? Because as you can see, that's why I said they're kind of like a boss, because they have a lot of power. The receiver can also abolish the positions of all members of the teaching and administrative staff, supervisory staff, and terminate the employment of any building principal assigned to a school, and tell people they can reapply, but that doesn't mean that they will hire them back. They can order the conversion of a school in receivership that has been designated as a failing, here it is, or persistently failing, school to a charter school. And again, we're going to continue to be on that list of failing if we don't assess 95% of our students, because that's the one piece right now from the district that's preventing us from getting off the focus list. Upon designation of a school as failing or persistently failing, tenure and seniority rights are modified. So I'm looking over at Satwell back there, because that's going to make a difference. And how, how are they modified? A lot of this is still up in the air. I'm not going to read through this. Again, you can read it. But again, a lot of power is given to the receiver. And who are those people? We don't know yet. What's the timeline? Who, what, and when? Well, the state can put any school not making targets or not getting off the list in a receivership at any time with an outside receiver. And again, if a school's been failing for 10 years, the state may make the superintendent the receiver for one year and give the superintendent all that power. And if the school's been failing less than two years, the state may make the superintendent the receiver for two years. This information comes out from the state budget proposal, Engage NY, other state files, et cetera. New York Times, NICEP. So those are fairly reliable sources when we think about that. So it's something that we need to think about as a community, and we need to come together on this. And so this coming school year, I will be calling upon people who are interested to come together and have discussions around this. I have also prepared, and will have on the website tomorrow, if you're interested. Some of you have, may have seen a letter that I created yesterday. It's gone to all the staff, it's gone to our BTPT membership, it has gone to anybody else that I could think of who might be interested. The letter talks about the perfect storm that has been created around us, and it's time that your voices are heard, that our collective voice is heard. There is a petition that was started in another county. It was not started in Duchess County. Currently, there are 17,000 and more signatures on this petition. Originally, we thought, we, meaning superintendents, we thought that we would do letter writing. But this petition coming out of another county has gathered such energy that I'm recommending that if you are so inclined and agree that we need to slow down this, we need to slow down this timeline, we need to really make some decisions based upon research of teaching and learning, and research of how organizations change, and not continue to make the same mistake of giving very little time for very complex processes to be developed, then you can simply click, I'm sorry, click on a link and electronically sign the petition. If the link, if the link doesn't click for you, if it doesn't go there, then copy and paste it into your browser, and it should, it should take you there to the, to the petition. I have, I will also post for you, and they're actually already online, thanks to Kelly, who's always had them up there, our local legislatures that you may want to pull a letter out of, this letter that I've written, and, and send information to them as well. I've also included the new, who has not yet, actually begun yet, but our new commissioner, our, a new regent, Judith Johnson, that comes from this area, who is very much an advocate and supporter of, of changing this up a little bit, and also Commissioner Tisch, I'm sorry, Chancellor Tisch, from the Board of Regents. So this will all be posted tomorrow, if you're interested. Are there any questions? Yes?
I have a few. So my, I guess I'm going to go in reverse order. My, my first question is, if a school is in receivership, how do they become unreceived? So how do they, do they have to meet the same three criteria for two years to be removed? And then if they're removed, do they go back to normal? Or do they have some modified version of that?
They have to do, again, the details aren't out until June 30th, but what the wording is, is dramatic turnaround. So it's not just a little improvement. They have to show major improvement. And I have to say, having been, you know, worked with state assessments over a long time, more than just the three years, to get a three to, a three to eight percent increase is pretty amazing in a year. So I don't know how much increase they're looking for, but we'll know more by June 30th.
And following that, where's the accountability? Is it on that person from the state, the receiver, who's making all these decisions? Or is it on the, the local teachers, students?
Well, I have to believe that the receiver had, I have to believe, again, we don't have all the guidelines, I would have to believe that the receiver would have some responsibility. But the major responsibility falls to the district and, and to the community, I have to say, because the district can't do it alone. We can't improve everything alone, and we can't, again, get off the list without testing that 95%.
I just have two other, please, or quicker. So one of the things that you said a receiver could do is add programs focusing on other areas of a student's life, the mental health, I don't remember what else you said, but...
Social health.
So is the state giving additional funding for those programs, or does that come out of the local budget?
Well, as you saw, the receiver can modify the budget. So we'll have to see if this is another unfunded or partially funded mandate from the state.
My other question has to do with the plan that you talked about for the APPR in the beginning of the presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Or, not the APPR, the plan that's being developed by the district and given to the state for possible approval.
Yes.
So is it mandated who participates in writing that plan?
Yes. Well, what I can say is, back years, three years ago, it was mandated who needed to be on that team, and it's always been mandated. Obviously, we have to have union leadership there, or who the union determines to be there. And then whatever, whatever other roles that the state feels should be on that team.
And then the, the last question, I promise, is, is the state going to be giving additional funding to the district in order to pull together these committees of people to work on a plan that probably is so much beyond what their regular duties are over the course of the summer?
So my best guess? No.
No. Thank you.
In the audience.
Two quick questions. Yeah, I'll just give them both to you. I, I just want to re-clarify, the only reason at this point Beacon District is a focus area is because of the lower than 95% rate?
Yes.
Okay. And secondly, in all the stuff that you've read, does anybody list anywhere the qualifications to be a receiver?
Not yet. That should be very interesting. Yes, Jan?
I read an article out of Syracuse, that the state would allow districts to average their scores from 2013 to 2014, so they would, like, if you were 95% the one year and, like, just under 95% the following year, then you could average those scores and not be a focus school. And the other question, the other comment is, does the state truly believe that by putting a district into receivership, that 95% or more would take these good exams? Do they think that's going to make a difference?
Well, apparently, they do. Yes?
Yeah, Dr. Wobley, today I had the opportunity to attend a forum that was, it was a presentation by the Senior Deputy Commissioner Ken Wagner. So there were, it was in, it was at Newberg Free Academy, you know, I was there, and I think John Candela was there as well. So we were able to listen to Ken talk about what's going on from May until right now, and some of the changes that they've made. And then they opened the floor for district administrators and also union leaders to come up and ask questions. They wanted no comments, they just wanted questions. And then Ken answered some of the questions. And they did talk a lot about receivership. One of the questions that I brought up was the Get It Right petition, and the 19,000 people that have signed that to talk about slowing up the process. And Ken brilliantly was able to dodge and deflect a lot of the really poignant questions that people were asking. They talked also about a validator that they may be implementing as well, that will be like an independent mediator. And they talked quite a bit about collective action, and some of the changes that now are coming into, in with the law specifically around the APPR. So it was very interesting to listen, there were people from Westchester, from Rockland, there were people from everywhere that were able to come up and ask some questions. So the question also came up around the work to be done over the summer. For those of you that don't know, the big position, of course, it's political, is that, well, don't do anything, and the problem will go away. And so, you know, as, as a union leader, I don't believe that that's the answer, because he was very clear in that they are going to follow statute, period. And, you know, some bells and whistles here and there about, we'll see, maybe, that kind of thing. So he didn't seem at all impacted by some of the petitions and some of the advocacy that's happening, although they recognize through waivers that, you know, people can apply for a hardship waiver. So there's over 600 school districts in the state, and Judith Johnson was there, she was, she was excellent. She was able to speak to the recognition that the state does have, because they're implementing the fact that they have to institute a waiver. So their expectation is that 660 schools will be applying for hardship waiver. So it is very political. So we're trying to work together to try to make it the best situation we can.
In a meeting with her, she suggested we do one collective one, actually. Yes?
I just had two questions. One was in reference to the union agreement for teachers to work over the summer. If there isn't an agreement that is reached, then what happens to all of the deadlines? Or is there a mandate that kicks in that allows for that, so teachers to be forced to come in?
No. We cannot force them, we have a contract. You know, and, and here in Beacon, we enjoy a really great relationship, it's not just teachers, it's administrators too. But administrators are working over the summer. But we enjoy a great relationship with our union. And you've just heard, you know, their point of view in terms of, of trying to, you know, move forward and do it in a way that, that we can do it collaboratively.
And then my second question is, which I have my own idea, whatever I was throwing out there, is, the goals for, for all these changes, hopes to bring about what difference? Like, are they trying to push us, you know? Like, let me see what you think.
Okay. Well, there are many hidden agendas here, and that's why it's very political. So ultimately, ultimately, I have to believe that the ultimate goal is to have effective teachers and effective administrators working with our students across the state and to raise student achievement. You know, ultimately, that's, that's my, my idealized goal. There's some people laughing, you know, come on. However, I also know that there are other agendas. For example, let's talk for a second about charter schools. Charter schools are a way for the state to reduce state taxes by placing the tax burden on the local district through charter schools. So maybe that's somebody's agenda, I don't know. It kind of looks like one for me. There are other political agendas that are connected to this, so I think there's a lot.
So let's say everybody in our district who's a parent gets on board, and for two years, we meet our 95% rate, and we're not a focus district anymore.
Yes.
Can you speak to what that will look like for us and our kids in school?
We're a district that's, we, we do get quite a bit of funding from the state through our title grants. And right now, our title grants are, for lack of a better word, controlled. Because we are a focus school, the state has determined that X percentage must be spent for Y, and X percentage must be spent for Z, which may or may not tie into what it is that we think. I also said, all of those goals that were listed from the receivership, those are our goals, because we are a focused school. Other districts that are not currently focused schools enjoy more freedom and more local control over the planning that takes place in the district. So the deeper we go into, the more that we're a focused school, the less flexibility and local decision-making we have.
So that means, and that's reflected in what? In terms of the amount of money that we can spend on programming that parents want to see versus what the state is saying, you have to put the money towards this to improve this?
Right. It, it, it does just exactly that. The state says, X amount of money for this. Now, they're all good things. They're all good things. We want to spend money on parent engagement, we want to spend money on literacy, we want to spend money, but the state determines how much that we spend.
Okay. A relation to that question for a minute, the money that we're getting through these different programs, we would still be entitled to get that money?
Yes. We, we are entitled to have those funds. Of course, it's not entitled to spend them the way we want.
Silly question. But, so, the not being a focused school, that's different than the failing school aspect, right?
Well, there are two designations. There's a priority school, which initially was schools in the state that fell within the lowest 5%. A focus school are schools that score in the lowest 10%. So that's the difference between the two.
And that's just that third thing, not if you don't have that percentage of testing? Like, one thing can just throw you off, no matter how, wow, that's crazy.
Yes. 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 Yep.
Has been published, I mean, the number of school districts across New York State who did not meet the 95% participation?
Yes, that was published in, I believe it was, like, don't quote me on this, but I believe it was around 98%.
Of the schools?
Across the state, yes.
98% did not make the 95%?
Yes. Yes.
So, so this could mean a wholesale taking over of the schools?
Yes.
By individuals which are controlled.
Correct.
But can I just, sorry?
And, and just to clarify, you have to not make those measures two years in a row. So, you know, people have got to kind of understand how this all works, you know, to put it together. Yes.
Now, what if you're not a failing school?
Yes.
And you meet your annual yearly progress and, and all of that, but you have 50% of your students taking the assessments? Would that put you on a failing school list?
It, it could. It could. I don't know that it will for every school.
I, I just want to clarify, when you, you know, when you say that 98% of the schools didn't meet the 95% of students taking the test, that doesn't necessarily mean that all of those schools are now failing schools.
No.
If they were already not failing schools, that isn't really impacting anything.
Right.
As long as they're making their adequate...
But that's your first year.
Right.
That's your first year.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. More to come, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the particular individual and the board will...